Okay, good afternoon. I'd like to call the order of the Planning Commission Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 to order. And can I get a confirmation from the clerk that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice had been properly filed?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was provided.
Thank you. Dean, can I have a roll call, please?
I'm gonna call, roll now. Commissioner Mike Sell, Commissioner Gilmore.
Present.
Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Bernhardt, Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Chair Hay.
Here.
So we have provided notice of today's meeting, and we have a quorum of five members present, and that gives us jurisdiction to move forward and consider today's business.
Okay, thank you, Dean. We'll move into 2.1, which is the approval of the April 5th minutes of the last meeting. Everybody had a chance to take a look at those?
I move the minutes of the April 5th meeting be approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second of the minutes for April 5th to be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That carries 5-0. We'll move now to number three now into new business under public hearings.
We have a public hearing for you this afternoon that was continued over from your April 5th meeting, and the application as before you is Z192A, and that's been filed by Derek Lee on behalf of MacArthur Enterprises Limited, and the request is to consider both approval of an amended Plan C5 district on a 44-acre tract of land on the west side of South Ninth Street, and then in combination with that, a final site plan for a proposed quick lane auto service center that would be located within that 44-acre planned commercial district. So I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Hers, and he will be covering both those items. That would be two different actions that the commission would be looking at. One would be to consider whether to amend the zoning district, which presently is limited to an electronic changeable copy sign only on the north portion, and then the second action would be to review and consider the proposed site plan for a quick lane auto center. So Mr. Hers will present that report for you in that order.
Thank you, Dean. So a brief history of the property. The property once was home to some slip ramps that connected South Ninth Street to the interstate highway, which is why there is a kind of a different, unique angle to the parcel that is the north boundary of the Long MacArthur dealership.
So just for your benefit, I've put on an easel there. There's an aerial photo that shows what the slip ramps looked like before they were taken out, and that explains the odd shape that's on this property. But before there was a shilling road interchange, those slip ramps were used to get off the interstate.
And so in the late 90s, when Long MacArthur was looking to develop this property, those slip ramps were removed, and they platted the property, and they constructed their dealership. After that, Marshall Motors came in, and they also built a dealership just to the south, and then recently in 2019, the north portion of their holdings, which is the blue area to the north of the dealership, was platted and was also rezoned to PC5, and in lieu of, or instead of having your standard PC5 regulations, that particular site, this north portion, this north 17 acres, was limited to the erection of a single billboard electronic message center sign, electronic billboard sign that is located in the northwest corner of the property. And so what has happened is the applicant, who is Long MacArthur, they are looking to replat their property, which is the next-gen item, and square off, so to speak, the holdings that they have, and to bring all of the area that you see in blue into one unified zoning district. So we have the south portion, which is the Long MacArthur dealership, and the Marshall Motors property that are currently zoned PC5, and then you have the north portion, north 17 acres, that is also PC5, but is limited only to that sign. So the goal is to, or what the applicant is requesting, is to unify all of these holdings into one zoning district that would adhere to the C5 district regulations and all of the uses listed in the South Ninth overlay district. And that's another piece of the history. So in the late 1990s, the South corridor, South Ninth Street corridor study was done, and it was determined that the particular properties in the South Ninth corridor should have an overlay district created. And what an overlay district is, is it's kind of like a secondary land use standard. So you have your zoning, which is our PC5, and then you have additional standards that are laid on top of that. And the biggest difference that you'll see for properties in the South Ninth Street overlay district and regular C5 or PC5 properties is that the overlay district has more limited uses, so you don't have the full range of allowed uses or permitted uses that you typically have in the C5 district, and the overlay district also has aesthetic standards for the building, like exterior materials and design of the building. And so that's kind of the brief history that we have there and what the applicant is requesting. So again, we're looking to unify the zoning district under a single PC5 zoning district that is cohesive, and we're also, that's the first action. And then the second action is we're going to look at a specific final development plan for a quick lane automotive service center. And so as we go through this, we're gonna talk about the rezoning first, and then we'll get into the details of the site plan, and then we get to the end where we're looking to take action. We will take action on those items separately. So we'll have one action for the rezoning, and then a second action for the final development So looking at the rezoning first, as I mentioned, the property is in the South Ninth Street corridor overlay district, which is designed to have a higher standard of quality for mixed-use planning, and it is primarily looking at moderate intensity in terms of its uses for service commercial businesses. So you're looking at some forms of retail and hotels, but not necessarily big-box stores. It's been determined that because of the Ninth Street median and how wide it is and having multiple lanes, it's not really conducive for a lot of big-box or heavy-traffic type of generating uses, and so that's why this area was determined to be a good place for automobile sales, and that was determined in the late 1990s and is carried forward to today. So the actual zoning ordinance requirements, I have them listed on page six and seven. The biggest things to probably note are that the permitted uses are a little more limiting in the overlay district, and again, we do have aesthetic standards that require that the buildings face Ninth Street, so the front of the buildings have to face Ninth Street, and that the exterior finish have no precast concrete or metal panels that face Ninth Street, and that the overall design is compatible in appearance with the surrounding properties. And looking at the suitability of the site for development under the existing zoning, the corridor study did determine that there weren't a lot of large geographic properties that had a lot of space that would be appropriate for dealerships that need that kind of space. And so as part of that study, it was determined that, again, this area would be a conducive location for automobile dealerships and automobile sales. And so the site itself has been zoned PC5 on the southern portion since the late 90s, early 2000s. The northern portion, which is Long MacArthur Edition Number Two, was zoned PC5 in 2019, but that particular zoning, again, is just limited to the sign, which means it's not very conducive. The current zoning is not conducive for extended development, meaning you couldn't build any additional automobile sales developments or the proposed quick lane auto service center that's being proposed. So the current zoning district in the north portion is limiting the development of the property. And looking at the character of the neighborhood, you have, on the east side of South Ninth Street, you have the county properties, and it's a heavy industrial zoning district. On the east, you have the interstate highway. On the north, you have Todd Circle, which currently has the Hilton Garden Inn Hotel, and you have, to the south, you've got two dealerships. You have the Long MacArthur dealership, and then you have the Marshall Motor dealership. And the properties to the north and south are all zoned PC5, so staff feels that rezoning the Long MacArthur Edition Number Two portion, the 17 acres, to be unified with those zoning districts would be appropriate for the area. And looking at the public utilities and services, there is a 12-inch water line on the east side of South Ninth Street, and there's a 15-inch sanitary sewer line on the west side of South Ninth Street, and the area is served for fire protection from Fire Station Number Three. So we do have adequate services for utilities as well as fire protection. The actual specifics to the access points of how the property will be accessed and controlled, and as well as the utility extensions and drainage will be addressed more thoroughly in the plat discussions. I will pull up a portion of the plat just to show you the connectivity of how the property will be accessed. So the applicant is proposing to construct a break in the existing median, and that break in median would have a proposed turn lane. So if you're going north, there'd be a left turn lane where you can kind of pull aside so people can pass you, and you can turn, make your left turn movement in. There's also a straight out or left out and a right out lane. So there's two exit lanes and one entry lane that are being proposed into the site, and we'll get into some of the specifics of the site when we look at the site plan. In looking at the conformance with the comprehensive plan, the property is a future land use category of commercial use, and what that means is it is suitable and designed for retail, service, office, civic, and institutional uses. And if you go through the list of locational criteria and developmental criteria, the requested amended PC5 zoning would meet all of those conditions or requirements that are set out in the comprehensive plan. So that takes us to the site plan review itself, and the site plan review itself is specifically for a quick lane automotive service center. So I'll pull up the site plan that the applicant has submitted. So it's kind of hard to see, but we should have a copy in your packet as well. So the total site, which is the proposed Lot 6 of the Long MacArthur Edition Number Three subdivision, is 128,938 square feet, and of that 120, almost 9,000, we have a building that consists of 14,400 square feet, and that's the blacked-outlying rectangle that you see on the site plan. You also have a little over 45,000 square feet of paving area for the parking areas that are on the north, east, and south sides of the building, and you also have 69,504 square feet of green space, which is almost 54% of the total lot. A lot of that is up front, where you have a 90-foot area that is set aside between the Ninth Street frontage and a frontage road that's being proposed, and that frontage road is a little over 95 feet set back from Ninth Street but paralleling it. And so that space in between that frontage road and Ninth Street is all green space with three trees, three shade trees that are being proposed to match the existing landscaping that is currently out at the site. So if you were to, and we'll get into that a little bit in more detail in the landscaping section, but I just want to point out kind of what we see here, is you have these trees along Long MacArthur and as well as the Marshall Motor site, where they have trees set about 75 feet apart in the front yard area, and what the applicant's architect has done is propose to carry that pattern forward. And so you have some front yard landscaping directly along Ninth Street, and then you also have some front yard landscaping between the frontage road and the property itself. So looking at the building design of the property, you have a frontage that faces Ninth Street, and the front area is glass, so the entrance, there is a canopy that juts out a little bit from the main body of the building, and there's a glass frontage there. The bottom 12 feet of the property is a CMU block that is painted a light gray, then there's this one-foot-wide metal band that's yellow, and then you have a darker gray with horizontal metal panels on top of that. And then you have what we call architectural panels along the frontage of the canopy, both on the pillars as well as the portion of the canopy that sticks out on the front. And those architectural panels are the same kind of panels that were used for the Long MacArthur dealership to the south, so it has a similar appearance to the adjacent properties down there. Then you also have 12 overhead doors for the service bays, and all of those overhead doors are glass. So you have the glass front, and then you also have the glass doors on the bays, on the service bays. And so one of the criteria that we're dealing with when we talk about properties that are being developed in the South Ninth Street overlay district is that, do they have an attractive exterior finish with no precast concrete and metal panels that face Ninth Street? In this situation, you do have some metal panels, but those are primarily on traditional metal panels, and that's primarily on the south 40 feet. So if you look back here, there is some panels that are your traditional metal panels. The rest of the paneling that is being proposed is of an architectural nature. So this is the black-and-white drawing that kind of shows up the difference in terms of the textures and materials a little bit better. You have your CMU block, and you have your horizontal panels above that, and then you have your architectural panels out front with your glass front and your glass overhead doors, and then the south, or excuse me, the west 40 feet, as well as the rear of the building, are your standard vertical metal siding. So that would be something for the commission to consider, is this, in your mind, meeting that intent and meeting the regulations in terms of having an aesthetically pleasing exterior of the building that doesn't have precast concrete or standard vertical metal Looking at the parking, so the parking for automotive service centers is going to be based on the number of bays you have as well as the number of employees. You are required to have two off-street parking spaces per bay plus one for each employee. The site will have 12 bays and 20 employees, which comes to 44 required off-street parking spaces, and the site plan that's being proposed has 57 off-street parking spaces, which should sufficiently meet their needs. Access and circulation, there is an access road with a shared easement on the north side of the property. So you come into the site, you enter the site from Ninth Street, where I'm showing my cursor, and you have the opportunity to drive west on a shared access drive, and then there's this access drive on the east side that also parallels Ninth Street and will take you to the vacant lots that are to the south here that have not been developed, and also potentially in the future, all the way to the Long MacArthur dealership. And there's also a 24-foot access aisle all the way around the building so that you have good parking circulation as well as fire protection access for fire vehicles and emergency vehicles. Looking at utilities, I mentioned earlier that there is a 12-inch sanitary sewer, or 12-inch water line and 15-inch sanitary sewer line. There's also a drainage easement that is being proposed on Lot 5 that is to the west of the property, which I'll scroll up here on the plat. So there's a drainage easement that is being proposed that is along the interstate highway and at Lot 5 that will have drainage that will be designed for stormwater runoff from all of the new developments on the vacant portions of the proposed Long MacArthur Number Three addition. Lighting, the applicant did submit a lighting plan, and here's a photometric sheet of what that looks like, and it's hard to pick out here, but basically a photometric sheet is a site plan drawing that shows the location of all the exterior lights and the illumination intensity as you get away further distances from the light. So these ovals that you see here are the direct influence of the parking lot lighting. So you have a light here, 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 and here, and all of those lights are shoebox style, downcast lighting, so they won't have a lot of light spill to them. So at the property lines, you're not gonna have a really bright intensity to it, which is what we're looking for. And for us, as long as you have a shoebox-style downcast light, you rarely have issues with intense light spill. So in those terms, the lighting plan is sufficient. Looking at the proposed signage for the property, the development is proposing to have some exterior signage, and you can see them on the elevation drawings. There's a quick lane sign, there's a tire and automotive or auto center sign, and then above each of the bays, there's also maintenance, tires and alignment, batteries, brakes and batteries, things of that nature, and there's also a proposed ground sign that would be out front as well. And so what the applicant is proposing is, he is proposing that the Planning Commission consider the frontage roads to the north as well as the frontage road on the east side in terms of calculating the allowable sign area. So the C5 district allows four square feet of sign area per lineal foot of building frontage. So what that means is we would take the building frontage along Ninth Street as well as the north frontage that faces the frontage road on the north side, and we would add those together and multiply them by four. And in doing so, the property would be allowed to have 1,104 square feet. The wall signs that I just showed you, in addition to the ground sign, would be approximately a little under 600 square feet. So it would fit within the allowable maximum square footage of sign area that would be allowed under the C5 district regulations. Landscaping, the C5 district does require that properties meet the landscape requirements in terms of area and plantings. And so in this case, the property is required to have 4,200 square feet of front yard landscaping. The applicant in the front 90 feet here, where you have this large green area, in the front 25 feet, is proposing 4,600 square feet. So the site plan, the landscaping plan, does meet the landscape regulations in terms of green space. Now, one of the things that the applicant is requesting is they're requesting to mimic the trees that have been planted to the south for the Long MacArthur dealership and the Marshall Motor dealership, and then move the balance of their landscaping to the area directly to the west of the frontage road. And so what you have is you have three shade trees along Ninth Street with an additional six ornamental trees and 57 shrubs in the landscape area that is between the frontage road and their parking lot, and that area, that green space, adds another almost 4,600 square feet. So there is a plethora of green space and landscaping that's being proposed as part of this particular development. The property is required to have eight tree units, and with the three trees out front as well as the landscaping that's being proposed to the west of the access road, if the commission were to count that as front yard landscaping, even though it's not in the front 25 feet of the property, they would meet that standard of eight tree units. Because the property has over 50 off-street parking spaces, they're also required to have 5% of their paving area dedicated towards landscaping islands, and what that means is they've got over 45,000 square feet of paved area, which results in 2,252 square feet of landscaping island area, and they are exceeding that. They have a landscape island area that is, they have a few peninsulas on the east side of their building, and they have a larger island and peninsula on the north side of their building, and all of that combined is over 2,600 square feet, which exceeds the minimum requirements. So on page 16, we do have a few findings of fact that we have summarized for you for the rezoning request. If you feel those are justifiable findings, you could note those. With that, the Planning Commission has alternatives, and this is for the rezoning. So again, we kind of have two actions here. We have the rezoning of the property to a PC5 that's unified with the rest of the Long MacArthur holdings to the south, as well as a final development plan that's a separate action. So the first action is the rezoning in that case, and in that case, the Planning Commission could recommend approval of an amended PC5 district for the purpose of creating a unified zoning district for the entire 44-acre tract that allows the full range of permitted uses and the ability to apply for any of the conditional uses listed in the South Ninth Street corridor overlay district. That's option number one. Option number two is the same, but it would allow you to have any conditions of approval listed with that. And then number three is you could, the Planning Commission could postpone action if requested zoning change to a zoning, to a future meeting if there is additional information that you feel is needed. And then number four, the Planning Commission could recommend that the status quo be maintained, which means that the vacant portion of the vacant ground that is currently defined or described as Long MacArthur Number Two would remain PC5 with a limitation to the existing electronic changeable copy advertising sign. So what staff would do is we would recommend option two with the four conditions listed on page 17. And so with that, I think what we do is just kind of stop and see if you have any questions, and then process the rezoning and then get into the final development plan after that. after that.
Anybody got any questions for staff?
I have one, Dustin. What is the difference between option one and number two on pages 16 and 17? I'm sorry, I don't see it.
Yeah, I don't think I typed it out well after I was rereading it. So the difference of what it was supposed to be is that option number one, you're approving the proposed rezoning with the full use of, full range of permitted uses that are listed in the overlay district. Option number two is the same thing, except it should have had with any conditions that the planning commission decides to attach to their approval. So option number two is really the same, except we would have the four conditions under staff recommendation. So I just, when I typed it out, I ended up not typing it out completely. It was in my head, it just wasn't on the paper.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. So it's just like option number one, except it has conditions tied to it, which is what we're recommending.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dustin, on the rezoning, what was the reasoning that they zoned at PC5 with that one sign? Didn't they ever think about the rest of the property, future land being developed? If they would have went ahead and developed, I mean, went ahead and rezoned the whole thing, PC5, we wouldn't even be talking about this part here right now?
That's true. I think at the time, rezoning this particular property to the full allowable list of uses that you typically would see in a PC5 would have required a different level of plating on the front end and a different level of planning out how it would be developed, which is really where we are now. In 2019, there weren't any conceived ideas of how the property would be used, other than the sign itself. And so in order to rezone the property to C5 from agriculture, it had to be platted. So the simplest way to do that was to just plat that piece, that north piece, as a separate subdivision, give it PC5 zoning, recognizing that it's not really quite ready for commercial development because we haven't figured out what we're going to do with utilities, we haven't figured out what we're going to do with access, and those types of things. But rather than holding up the rezoning for the sign, because the sign was, there was some urgency from the people who wanted to erect the sign, rather than trying to plan out all those items, it was, well, let's just get to the point where we can approve the sign, and then we'll just require that this property be rezoned and replatted at a later date when we get to the point of developing it with actual structures that are occupied by people and require access and utilities and things of that nature that the sign doesn't require.
Okay.
So in 2019, the applicant was not MacArthur Enterprises, the applicant was Blue Beacon, because they're the owners of the sign, and Blue Beacon was not interested in doing a drainage study or designing utilities that weren't needed for a sign or street access that weren't needed for a sign. So that was like plating light, and now this is like, that was a placeholder, and now this is the owners with their vision for what they want to do with the rest of the property, so.
Okay. Any more questions for staff? Is the applicant, would they like to add anything to this?
Do you happen to stand for any questions?
Anybody got any questions for the applicant itself?
Good afternoon, I'm Derek Lee from Long MacArthur Ford, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. We got anybody online?
It does not appear so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no more questions for staff or no more questions for the applicant, I bring it back up to the commission for some action, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve application Z19-2A with the recommendations one through four under staff recommendations.
And that would be the number two?
Right.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve application Z19-2A. Option number two with the four recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. Okay, that brings us to the next.
So then, that's the first action item, and then the second action item is specific to the actual site plan itself. And what you could do there is you could recommend approval of the proposed site development plan for Lot 6, which is the lot that the Quick Lane is being proposed on, subject to whatever conditions that you believe are reasonable and appropriate. You could, that's option one. Option two is recommend approval of the proposed development plan, subject to certain revisions and/or corrections being made to the plan. Option three is you could recommend denial of the proposed site development plan as submitted citing the reasons thereof. Or number four, you could postpone consideration if additional information is needed. We are recommending that the property be, or the site plan, the final development plan, be approved with the conditions listed on page 19 as well as 20. In total, there are 10 conditions of approval that we would recommend being subject to the approval of the final development plan.
Has the applicant looked over the conditions? Are there any problem with those 10 conditions?
No.
Okay. If there's no more questions on that, I'll bring it back up to the commission for some action.
I have a question for staff on the site plan. Was, there was the request to review the street frontage on both of the access roads for the sign. Was this also looked into as the number of tree units required?
No, it was just for the sign area, just to, because sign is looked at per building frontage, that's how they would, that's how they preferred that the planning commission viewed their signage in this particular case. Now, with that being said, there is a landscaping island on the north side that has additional trees in it. The ornamentals, it looks like there's one, two, three, four, five, six additional ornamentals on the north side, as well as some shrubs. But we did not do any calculating or quantifying on that access road on the north side in terms of, is that a front yard area, and if so, how much landscaping is there? Now, I will say, because this is a little bit unique in that there is an access road that staff recommended that the developer move further away from Ninth Street than what it was originally proposed, it makes it a little bit different, a little bit awkward. And we did that so that there would be adequate stacking spaces. Because if you had an access road, you know, somewhere in here where the cursor, my cursor is, and you had some vehicles stacked here to exit, and you had somebody coming down Ninth Street to get into the subdivision, they couldn't do that. So in order to reduce the conflict, the staff recommended that the access road, the frontage road on the east side of the development be pushed back further from Ninth Street to make sure that you had stacking for five vehicles here. And in doing so, you kind of made it awkward in what is the front yard of the development? And technically speaking, the front 25 feet is up here, but if you are a patron of the business or just somebody from the public, and you're coming into the site and you're driving by, it's really going to look and feel like this is the front yard landscape area. And so they kind of have two landscape areas that are both around 4,600 square feet. So they do have a lot of landscaping, and so maybe that's something to consider. But you're right, we did not count the landscaping along the north side of the building as frontyard landscaping.
But we could have.
But we could have.
So I think what Commissioner Gilmore's question is, is if the north frontage road is considered a front yard for signage purposes, should it not be considered a front yard for landscaping purposes? And it appears that the designer, Mr. Wren, has treated it that way. So I think, although we don't have the calculations, that is a judgment call for the planning commission. But it appears to us that the landscape buffer along the east-west shared access road meets the spirit and intent of the front yard landscaping requirements as if it were a front yard. So for consistency purposes, I think it's fair for the commission to view the north frontage road as a front yard for both signage and landscaping purposes to be consistent.
Okay.
I have a question for staff as well. It was mentioned in this report that staff was waiting for a plan on a proposed median break. I saw that was in the paperwork. Are we happy with what was proposed on that?
Yeah, so it's, we did end up getting a plan on the preliminary plat, which that's what we will discuss in the next item. But just to give you an idea of how that all interconnects, because it does impact the site plan, is there is a median break that's proposed directly across from where you see that access road that is on the north side of the Quick Lane that's being proposed. So this, where my cursor is right here, that is that access road. So that north access road that runs east-west is where the curb cut will be for the Ninth Street entrance exit point. And so there's a median that's proposed just directly to the east of it, in which there is a D-cell turn lane for, or a turn lane for people coming from the south wanting to make a left turn into it. And there is a kind of A-cell lane for people that are coming out and wanting to get north where they can turn and then merge into traffic. So that, this is the design that's being proposed for the median break.
So, and we'll get into a little more in when we discuss the plat, and it's the reason we have the other aerial photo down here, but the aerial photo that has the orange improvements on it, there is a design that's been approved for Phase 5 of South Ninth Street improvements. And what we wanted both the applicant's designer and the planning commission to be aware of is that if, whenever those are implemented, that converts South Ninth Street into looking what it looks like farther north, that northbound lane is going to move. So it's going to move closer to the southbound lanes, and the road is going to be relocated slightly to the west. So what we're reviewing and approving in this case, we would consider to be an interim median break, because it may ultimately get modified if the Phase 5 of the South Ninth improvements get done. So it's, we're calling it a median break, but it's, it could be an interim design, and then it may get modified. So what you see in front of two signs, and then that area there, and then immediately south of Schilling Road, that is Phase 4 of the South Ninth Street improvements, and there's a Phase 5 that goes from Riffle Drive down to Berg Road. And so that has not been, it's been designed, but it hasn't been implemented yet. And so what we're looking at here will serve the purposes of this development, but it is subject to being modified and reconfigured at some later date if those, that Phase 5 project moves forward.
So, any more questions? Okay, we'll bring it back up to the commission for action on that item.
I'll make a motion that we approve this site plan with the 10 recommendations included on page 19 and 20 of our report. That is my motion.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0.
Who had the second on that?
I did.
Mr. Gilmore? Thank you.
That moves us down to 3.2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 3.2 is a companion replat of this property. And if you look in your packet at the jigsaw puzzle of Long MacArthur Edition and Long MacArthur Edition Number One, and it's specially noticeable, I don't know if you have the zoning map, Dustin, or the parcel map that has the line going through it, but that's probably the best depiction of what that looks like. So it would be the shaded vicinity request area map with zoning on it from the packet.
This one, oh, the zoning one?
Well, it'd be the black and white version of that. Okay, so this, so the present puzzle is that you have this match line right here, and this is Edition Number Two, and this is the original edition. And then just to make things more interesting, they acquired an additional strip of right away along here from I-135 that wasn't incorporated in either of those plats, which kind of squares it off. So the purpose of this replat is to knit the two additions together into a single subdivision to incorporate that thin strip along I-135 that was acquired later from KDOT and not included in either of the subdivisions. And so we have this awkward diagonal line that runs between the subdivisions, which is a remnant from the slip ramps that we showed you there on the property. And so now the proposal is to take this rectangle and get rid of the diagonal line to create seven lots, five for development, two being set aside for stormwater detention ponds. And so we'd have Lot 2 occupied by Marshall Motors, Lot 3 is already occupied by Long MacArthur Ford. We have proposed Lot 6, which is intended to be the site of the Quick Lane Auto Center. And then we have proposed Lots 4, which is south of the Auto Center, and Lot 7, which is north, and those are unknown at this time. So as we look at our subdivisions needing to have access to at least one direct access perimeter street, that perimeter street in this case is South Ninth Street, and this subdivision would have a total of five existing and proposed street connections to South Ninth Street. And as we noted, if you've been out there, this section of South Ninth does not meet full city street standards because it doesn't have curb and gutter, and it doesn't have sidewalks, but those will be addressed through Phase 5 of the South Ninth Improvement Project, and that is being financed by the city at large, so it's not the responsibility of the applicant or developer at this time. So as we noted, with the three existing and the two additional access points, this provides multiple means of access into the subdivision in an emergency situation. So we have the total of 2,148 feet of frontage on South Ninth Street. This does not extend all the way to Waterwell Road, because you recall that we have the home addition that you looked at earlier, which is right on the corner of Waterwell and Ninth Street. From the aerial photo, if you could scroll to the north a little, Dustin, you can see that there is no existing median break. And so the plan in this case would be to provide full access to create the median break in the Ninth Street median, and then provide a second right-in, right-out driveway for the northern portion. So that north curb cut straddles Lot 6 and 7, and so there'll be an east-west road along the north side of Lot 6 and the south side of Lot 7, and then access to Lot 4 will also come from that frontage road. As we noted, there's no median break proposed for that right-in, right-out to the south. We don't have any internal public streets, and so there's no We don't have any internal public streets, and so there's no street names in this case. Everything will be addressed off of Ninth Street. All the lots, except for the detention ponds, which are, are not designed for development, have frontage on and access to South Ninth Street. They're using cross-access and shared access easements to provide access. We've summarized for you how this is broken up. The Marshall Motors side is six acres, Long MacArthur Ford is 17 acres, lot four is four acres. The lot we just discussed is a little under three acres, and then lot seven has eight acres. All of those conform with the lot size requirements for the overlay district. So as far as utilities, and as we noted in, in 1999, when Long MacArthur Ford proposed relocating out to this corridor, the city had nothing. There was no water, no sewer, nothing. So there was a plan and a project put together, and a benefit district created that brought a 12-inch water line down the east side of South Ninth Street, and a 15-inch sewer line down the east, or the west side of South Ninth Street, and those tie into Waterwell Road and provide access to development down there. There is a, the plan here, and you may want to go back to that, that plan sheet with the blow-up of the frontage road, Dustin, but they, they plan to have one board crossing under Ninth Street. It is fairly expensive when you have a water line that's on the, the east side of the street, and you have to bore under Ninth Street to connect to it and bring it across. So the revised plan we have only has one board crossing, and that, that would be up where Dustin is pointing at the north end. There's already a crossing that goes from east to west that serves a water line in front of Long MacArthur Ford. So the plan is to bring that north along the west side of Ninth Street and have a water line loop around the Quick Lane Auto Center. And then the Director of Utilities is going to require that a valve be placed in the water line at, in Ninth Street, because in most of our subdivisions, we try to get a loop system where two sources of flow, but there's only one source of flow here. That's the water line in Ninth Street. So if there was a break or obstruction there by having the valve there, that would allow the property still to be served. There's also a plan to extend a sewer from the sewer line, and, and it will straddle the lot line between Quick Lane Auto Center and the lot four. And then if there's development on lot seven, it will just have a direct tie-in with the, the sewer line. You have at your place a memo there that summarizes the drainage plan. This subdivision, even though it's all unified, it'll essentially have two drainage areas. You've got a south drainage area, and this pond addresses the north drainage area. So there'll be runoff from this back portion here that will go along a ditch and come into the pond. And from the back of lot seven, we'll go into the ditch, from the ditch into this pond, and then there'll be a pump station here and a force main that will pump the discharge into I-135. And KDOT has a program where they issue what they call a right-of-way discharge permit that allows development along Ninth Street to, to discharge their runoff into the right-of-way for I-135. There's existing gas lines and Evergy sewer lines and, or overhead electric lines in place. There's no additional internal streets, so we're not having any new right-of-way dedications. There'll be restricted access where there's not any approved access openings. We did want to point out that, I think it was right about the time, or right after the sign was being reviewed in 2019, that Evergy decided to expand a substation that's on the east side of South Ninth Street, and they felt the need to condemn an 80-foot easement across the north 80 feet of this property. So 80 feet is a pretty generous easement, especially when you combine it with the 40 feet on the other side of the line. But there's, even though lot seven looks quite large, the north 80 feet of that is subject to an easement for Evergy. So that's not usable or developable space. There are internal 20-foot utility easements being provided for the public water and sewer line extensions, a drainage easement for the detention pond, and an access easement for the shared east-west access road and the private frontage road. So the, the thing that we want, two things we want to touch on is the proposed improvements that do not exist. And so from a street standpoint, completion of phase five is a responsibility of the city at large, and it's not the responsibility of the property owner. What will be their responsibility would be doing the interim median break and putting in the, the turn lanes and decel lanes, and also the driveway culverts here. There's kind of a flow line of a ditch that carries water from south to north. They will need to construct a detention basin, and then they'll be responsible for the cost of the public water line extensions, plus the cost of boring under Ninth Street. Those could be financed through special assessments, or they could be financed privately by the, the developers. That will be their choice. The other thing we wanted to point out is that in 1999, there was assessments levied against this, what was then KDOT right-of-way, and KDOT said, "We're KDOT, you can't special assess us." So we did what was called a capital cost recovery charge, and so that was levied against the property with the city to be reimbursed at some point when the property developed. And so there is a fee to help compensate the city for the water and sewer lines that were put in. Those have been paid by Marshall Motors, Long MacArthur Ford, by the Hilton Garden Inn, but not, not by this property. And so there will be a need to pay that hookup fee. And it does allow, within the ordinance, it says that the governing body may approve an agreement with the party, the party seeking to develop the tract specifying when the payment is made or setting up a payment plan. And so we just wanted the commission and the applicant to be aware that that has been placed on the property, and we'll have to calculate the specific reimbursement amount. But that was paid on the, the riffle portion to the north where Hilton Garden Inn is. It has not been paid on this property, because the sign that was placed there didn't consume any utilities. So our recommendation is to approve this replat incorporating all the public improvements shown on the preliminary plat drawing. And then we have five recommended conditions, some of which are consistent with the conditions that were placed on the, the Quick Lane site plan. But that would be, that it is important to get the utilities in place, and particularly the water for fire protection to the other side of Ninth Street, and get an all-weather access road in there for fire protection before we start building any buildings. So most of the conditions relate to that and to finalizing the drainage plans. But with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about the, the replat for the 44 acres.
As a private frontage road, who's in charge of maintaining that road?
That would be the applicant's responsibility or the developer. They can either address that through the sale or lease of the property, or they, they could create an entity to maintain that. But absent that, it would be the underlying property owner would be responsible for the, the portion in front of them. So we have some similar situations. We have the, there's a road that extends from Belmont Boulevard west of Planet, and that is owned and maintained by Goodwill and by Ashby Furniture, and also by the Candlewood Suites. And so that's a shared private access road. And so that is, if there's a pothole or plowing or anything like that, the city is not responsible for that. That's solely the responsibility of the private property owner. But it's, it's a public access easement so that people can go back and forth, and so that trash trucks, fire trucks, and all have a right to use that as if it's a street.
Do you have median cut that is going to be, that's just south of Berg Road there? Is that where it's going to be? It doesn't, is it just below?
It doesn't really line up well with anything with, I don't, you probably would have to go to the aerial photo, and we've done some measuring, and I've, I've asked that question myself, but that, that is where it lines up, right where Dustin has his cursor. So it, it doesn't line up with that road that goes over to the substation, and there's no corresponding streets on the other side. And so it's strictly going to be for, for properties on the west-hand side, and doesn't, doesn't have a dual purpose. So if you're, if you're going south and you end up in that median break, you're, you're not going anywhere except for a U-turn, so.
Okay.
But that is, again, a temporary measure, right?
It's a temporary measure. I, it's, it's possible, I don't know if you want to scroll, if you could scroll to the north a little, Dustin. When we laid out, and that's part of the way, why this kind of looks the way it is, but when we, we laid out this subdivision here, we made sure that this street lined up with Avenue B, and this street lined up here with Avenue A, so that the crossing here could, could benefit both directions. But there's just nothing there to line up with. It's possible that, long-term, that something could happen here, and if it did, then we'd try to make sure that whatever access there was here lined up with that existing median break. But right now, it's only to benefit access on the west side of Ninth Street.
Any more questions for staff? Anything, would you, anybody got any questions for the applicant on this? Nobody online?
Correct. We have nobody online.
Anything you'd like to add? Okay. If there's no questions for the staff or the applicant, or nobody online, we'll bring it back up to the commission for action, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed replat with the five conditions listed on page eight. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve P-22-2, uh, -2A with the five conditions. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
I think on, I, sorry. Along with the recommendation two, would it be above us to add the maintenance of that road and the grassy area there to the east of it as well? As far as maintenance, that would need to be ironed out?
No, that, that would be within your prerogative if you want to see some sort of maintenance agreement or something developed that would set out that responsibility for the access road and for that, that green space area.
I think just in case they were to sell off the lot four and/or lot seven there, just ironing out who's going to be taking care of that should be part of the process.
Okay, so we need to amend that motion then?
So we'd have to see if the maker of the motion, Mr. Farber, was willing to entertain a friendly amendment that would modify condition two, that would deal with maintenance agreement for maintenance of the shared detention pond area, the frontage roads, and the, the area between the frontage road and Ninth Street.
I would, I would say that we are safe, because that is going to be a privately-owned area. And I'll take any input from staff in regards to that. But I think it, it is understood that that is not city-maintained, since that is a private-owned area.
My concern is if, if Long MacArthur were to sell off that property to somebody else, just to iron out who's going to be taking care of that in the future. Because yes, they own it currently, but are they going to own it for eternity? We really don't know.
One way I think that we could address that without necessarily recording a separate agreement is that we would work with the applicant and their design engineer to put, we, we generally would put a note on the plat anyway for future reference, but we can have a note added to the plat, and the plat would be recorded to just spell out in that plat note who is responsible for the east-west and north-south frontage roads. And then that, that would be on the, on the face of the plat and be recorded in, in that way. So that, that would establish that to run with the land and put all future buyers on notice by having it as a note on the plat. So as opposed to having a separate maintenance agreement, I think we can just, we could enter it into the record as part of, of your action, that maintenance of the frontage road and, and the green space out front will be addressed, can be addressed through notes placed on the face of the plat. We, we can make sure that that happens.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
That work? So moved, so we don't need to adjust the motion?
So there wouldn't be a separate recorded agreement for the frontage road and the green space, but we would just make sure that there were notes on the plat that specified who is responsible for that, and that does get recorded, and those notes run with the land and run with the plat. So anybody looking to purchase a lot can go to the plat and see how that's set up, and that's, we, we do that with drainage ponds all the time, because it's, it's always a matter of interest, especially 30 years after the fact, who is responsible to maintain that pond. So we put it on as a note on the plat. So by putting it on the plat, it's not going anywhere.
Okay. Okay, so with the original motion, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That carries 5-0.
So for the benefit of the applicant and the Planning Commission, that recommendation would go to the City Commission on the 9th of May for an ordinance that would change the zoning of this property and for accepting the plat dedication. So we appreciate your time and attention to these two matters. There are no text amendments or legislative matters that we have to bring before the commission, and we have no administrative matters. Don't know if there's, we would pause to see if there's any issues or items that the commission wanted to have a preliminary discussion on at this time.
Okay. I got one thing I would like to, I'd like to bring, would it behoove us to add, when we get ready to make a motion or to do a motion, for that we add, that is, it's a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Commission to approve this?
Yes. The, and we'll, I'll have to go back to Mr. Hurd's report and how he and how he worded those things. So what, what we try to do is, and we, we have some, some cheat sheets that are supposed to be attached for making motions. But if you, if you look at page sixteen of the Z-192A, what the options say is that the planning commission could recommend approval. And so what we try to do, and we can try to bring a little more attention to that, but what we try to do in our, when we lay out your alternatives is we try to, where you're making a recommendation, we use the terminology recommend approval. And when you're actually approving something, we just use the word approve. So it's, it can be and is confusing, but in the case of a zoning action, you are recommending. In the case of a plat, you are actually approving or disapproving. So what we try to do in our terminology when we give you your alternatives is we use the word approve if you are the approving body and we use the term recommend approval when you are in the role of recommending. So we can try to, to do that and we try to make sure we have some attachments that we should, could have and should have attached. In this, this case, it's kind of a cheat sheet for making motions on, on the different kinds of actions. So we, we have those. So we just need to be, one, do a better job of including those in your packets and then two, calling your attention to those. But we, when, when you're looking at a staff report, when you're in a recommending mode, we, we try in the alternatives to say recommend approval. And so when we're writing a report to the city commission, we're saying that the planning commission met on this date and they voted five to zero to recommend to you. And then their city commission, we give them the option to accept the planning commission's recommendation or do, but we, we make sure it is worded that way as a recommendation.
Okay. Because I know I was approached by a person who was watching us on TV and they asked that question, you know, how come we approved something? And then it went to the city commission and the city commission said, "No, that's not the way it's going to be. It's going to be this way." And so I thought if, you know, if it'd be a little bit more clear to the folks at home, if we did it that a way that they know this was a recommendation and what's a recommendation and what's an approval?
So, yeah, that's what, and as presenters of reports, in the case of today, one thing we can try to do is, for the benefit of those people watching, is that when we conclude our report, we can remind you that you're, you're acting in a recommendation role on this item and that you're acting as a decision-maker on this item. But as far as today's items, in the first item, you are making a recommendation to the city commission. In the second case with the replat, you are the body that approves or disapproves plats. And that's an important distinction. The reason the plat goes on to the city commission is only the city commission can accept the dedication of right-of-way or easement. So when they're, when they're getting the plat, they're not voting on the plat per se. They're voting to say, "We agree to take on these easements or this right-of-way as public dedications." So we can do a little better job of making that clear so that people, and we, we even have applicants who it's like, "Okay, I've gotten through the planning commission. I'm done." And that's why we remind people or try to that what date their item is going on to the city commission.
I think that's a good point, Mr. Chair. And I think a cheat sheet would be helpful to some of us newer members with motions and so forth. I had one question for staff. I remember last meeting, as we dismissed, we were discussing the vape shop at Crawford and Broadway, I think it is, Crawford and Ninth. And I just wondered if there was any update or if anything happened with that.
Well, we had some discussions and we, we can try to find our, our contact people. But one of the things that we have looked at and it's, it's something that we have to consider every time and in, in many cases, it's, it's nonsensical in, in terms of a common sense standpoint. But I'll, I'll give the, the example of election signs in election season. So under Kansas law, when you are in election season, which is, I think, seventy-five days before an election, it is legal to put campaign signs out in the right-of-way. It's the only time of year when you can have temporary signs out in the right-of-way. But because of a Supreme Court decision that basically says in our enforcement, we can only look at the size, the location and the manner in which a sign is placed. We can't regulate a sign based on what it says. So we completely rewrote all of our sign codes. So before, we had garage sale signs, for-sale signs, election signs. We've deleted all references to those. And so we have temporary signs and permanent signs. And so during election season, if you want to put your garage sale sign out in the right-of-way, it's legal because we can't regulate a sign based on what it says. So as we stopped and paused to say, "Well, can a building owner put a banner on their building?" So if you're a bank and you're having a, a car loan deal, you can mount a banner to the outside of your bank advertising your loan rates. So it's legal to put a banner on the side of a building. And so we stopped to think and said, "Well, if we're, if it's legal to put a banner on the building, can we tell them to take it down based on what it says?" And we're probably not on real firm ground to say, "Well, could I have a banner that said something else?" Yes. So are you regulating the content of my sign? And essentially, we would be doing that. So what we can really control is whether they can open for business or not. So if, if it said that and it said coming soon or something like that, that's not, that's not uncommon. But as we looked at that and said, "Well, that's essentially, it could be construed as premature or false advertising," we kind of concluded that what we're really doing is we don't like what your sign says and we're kind of limited in being able to regulate signs based on what they say. So that's a long-winded answer for, we didn't, we didn't order them to take it down because we're basically be doing it based on content, not because they couldn't have a banner sign, so.
Makes complete sense. Thank you.
Okay, any unfinished business or other?
Well, for other business, we'll be having that case on your next agenda. So you can, you can discuss it again then, but that, that will be coming to you at your May third meeting. And then we've already got applications filed or at least one and perhaps more for May seventeenth. There's a piece of property, it's kind of a, a narrow piece of property. It's on the south side of Magnolia Road where Highland intersects. And it's next to the veterinary clinic and it used to have a house on it. And it's zoned R1. And so the, the applicants, or the, it's now in an estate and they're trying to, and it's happened before, not followed all the way through, but they're trying to rezone that to commercial use. So if, if approved, everything from Highland over to Ninth would be commercial. And it's a rather small lot and it did use to have a house on it. So there's a request to rezone that to a commercial classification. So we'll, I don't see us having any Tuesdays off for the foreseeable future.
Okay. I don't see anybody out in the audience out there for a public forum. So I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
And I do have some minutes for the chair to sign on your way out over there.
Okay.